Directors at, it looks like 636.
Yes.
This is our first meeting after the town meeting day elections and our first order of business is to elect a chair, so I'll entertain a motion for chair.
I'd make a motion to appoint Jim Murphy as the board chair.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you everyone for trusting me with this again. So let's do, let's do public comment and then we can elect the rest of the officers and we can move into the agenda. So we'll be moving the election of officers up before the consent agenda and then we're also adding co-curricular appointments to the consent agenda, which I don't have to tell them. And first off, congratulations to Mara, Annika and Jill.
Thank you.
Well, to Annika and Jill, we will be assigning new mentors and catching you up. The first few meetings, you'll probably, it's a few in time, so.
Thank you.
But we're all very excited to have you and thank you for stepping in.
Thank you.
Likewise.
Excited to be here.
So public comment, not seen any. So let's move to election of officers. So we need a vice chair, a clerk, and well, I don't believe we need one, we've always had a parliamentarian to resolve any kind of process disputes. Bridgette, would you like to remain as vice chair?
I would be happy to, sure.
To have a motion to appoint a vice chair?
I'd make a motion to appoint Bridgette as our vice chair.
I'd second that.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
Jared cannot make it, right?
She's out of town.
Yeah. Is she a?
She's a clerk currently.
Do you think she wants to continue serving? We can delay the appointment.
See, I haven't heard her make any complaints that that title has been over her. She's not here, we all know how that goes in meetings when.
Should we appoint Jerry if she kicks and screams, we can reappoint?
Yeah, because we might forget.
Does she need to be present for us to?
To appoint.
No.
I don't think so, no.
I would ask our parliamentarian, but we have that idea.
She wouldn't need to be sworn in first, though, before she could well act in a meeting.
Oh, was she elected this time too?
She was on the ballot this time.
Did she get sworn in?
No, we actually, I think I sent an email to you, the results in Roxbury aren't final.
Okay.
They had to recount some of the ballots, everything is still temporary in terms of, so there hasn't been an official calling on her race even though she was an uncontested election, but so no, she's not been sworn in.
So can we make, can I make a motion that we delay the appointment of the clerk until next board meeting?
I don't know if we need, do we need a motion on that or can we just do it?
I think you just table it.
We can just do it if we remember it. The motion would help us remember it.
Yeah.
He's been saying we have three minutes.
Yeah.
Ironically, it's the clerk who worries.
I mean unless, unless someone else is really itching to do it, my guess is Jared would not be forced to.
I don't know enough about what the clerk would do versus another position, so that's fine, thank you.
I don't think so. And parliamentarian Ryan, were you, you were the previous parliamentarian?
I am currently, yes. Well, previously.
Do you want to remain in that role, because I'm sure you've memorized Robert's rules.
I think, I would strongly, I would try to persuade you to.
Unless Jill or Annika or either of you like Robert's Rules of Order nerds, no?
A little, but not enough to step up for that on my first day.
Yeah, Parliament Pro is not a gift, so.
Personally, doggy copy of Robert's Rules.
Sorry, I have one with me, so I guess that seals the deal, doesn't matter.
All right, well then. Our move that we appoint Ryan as parliamentarian.
I second that.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda, and just so you, Jill and Annika, I'm sure you probably know how consent agenda works, but a lot of our business, we just do with consent agenda, basically things in the packet, so we don't have discussion on it, we have a motion approval, consent agenda. If there's an item that you have questions about or want to remove for discussion, when we bring up approval of consent agenda, you can, yeah, make a motion to remove an item and then put it on the, on the actual agenda. So with that in mind, and with the addition of the co-curricular, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
So a second?
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So for board discussion, budget vote results, the budget pass, yeah, it was either 2343 or 2434 to 638 or 683.
In Montpelier.
In Montpelier.
Do we know anything about the Roxbury?
I spoke with the town clerk this afternoon at about four o'clock and it sounds like there were some issues with some of the ballots and they were doing a recount all across the board tonight, so there's nothing presented right now at all for the results in Roxbury.
So what I got from you last night was 2454 in favor, 863 opposed.
Okay, that was pretty close.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it passed overwhelmingly in Montpelier. It's a good job and I, I think those numbers, even if everyone in Roxbury opposed it, I think we can simply say.
It'll still be fine. I know, that's not like I voted in favor of it.
Yes.
It wasn't everyone.
It was at least one.
That was not the case in Roxbury.
Yeah, so I think we had assumed the budget passed. Hopefully it also passed in Roxbury and, you know, we're one district, so the votes, probably those votes are totaled from both towns, so even if, even if Roxbury were to, if the numbers in Roxbury did not add up to a yes vote, it would be totaled to the whole district, so. And Roxbury has what, about the 11, 111 the population of Montpelier?
Approximately, yeah.
Do you know what the population of Roxbury is off the top of your head?
The 2010 census was 691.
Okay.
And that's kind of the standard number, they get to use a lot.
So the other, the other piece I want to bring up, because with Libby not being here very soon, we're going to want to push her policy monitoring efforts to next week.
Yeah, we also don't have student leadership, do we?
Yeah, it might be a very, very quick meeting.
This is the latest, even without, even had they been here, this is the latest agenda I've ever seen, I was thinking that heading into this.
Yeah, most meetings are not this quick.
You guys are easing us into it.
Yeah, Mara, I'm very, I'm telling you, you guys always end up like 10 o'clock at night.
So I do want to bring up that Steve mentioned.
I was just going to ask you if we were.
Yes, submitted his resignation to me yesterday, effective immediately, so we have a vacancy on the board. I want to thank Steve for his years of service. He served for quite a while and was a real strong advocate for our kids and our students. So unfortunately Steve has stepped down, I think largely due to personal and scheduling reasons. So we do need to put out notice and probably, you know, maybe post on both the district website and our Facebook website that we're, we're looking at applicants. Should we set a schedule for when we want applicants by or should we maybe wait, wait till a meeting to have some conversations with some community members and see what the end of the city center, I think that's where we're going.
Yeah, but I, so the one thing I just wanted to bring up is when are we next in Roxbury? Because if we, is that the first, is that the first meeting in April?
I'll tell you.
Because if it is, then we'd be, we wouldn't want to do it that night because we want to give people a chance.
April 1st in Roxbury.
That's right. And I hate to push it, another meeting, so.
Maybe in April.
Five weeks.
That would be a long time.
And how does, do you have a copy, because I know April's got the winter, spring break too, so sometimes we.
Sometimes we, oh, sometimes we meet this.
Sometimes we like crush them.
Right.
Yeah.
The 20th, the 26th is spring break, so we're scheduled to meet on the 1st and the 15th.
And we do not have on the 20th.
I, and, yeah, so why don't we, why don't we put April 15th as our decision date? And if, you know, we need more time to get candidates, we can always push that back, but I think, I think the 18th of this month is.
It's just too soon, right?
Is way too soon.
Yeah.
And the April 1st meeting is in Roxbury and I think it would be good to have it in Montpelier, so.
Especially in Montpelier.
Yeah, exactly, that would give Montpelier residents the ability to, to come if they want and it would make it also easier for candidates to appear before us.
Jim, how long is Steve's term left?
Steve was elected a year ago, so it would be a two-year term. I think we need to talk to John Odom and see whether our appointment would be till the next town meeting day or there's also an election in November.
Okay.
Just my guess is, and I haven't looked, is that probably it would be November just because it's the earliest election that, you know, we could appear on. And then that election would be for either a year and a half or a year depending on what day it lists for. And, yeah, the person to appoint doesn't necessarily have to run for that seat, so if they, you know, wanted to see how they liked it and then let the seat be open, you know, they could not run and it could be get filled through the election. Okay, so our students are here either.
They might be at the basketball game. The semifinal.
I don't think they're being sick.
That would be better.
So, so we have several committees that have kind of varying degrees of work. We have, I don't think we have any, well, we've got the, the only real special committee we have right now is the MSF.
Language immersion, right?
I mean, negotiations committee isn't a special committee, but once our work is done, we hopefully will have an agreement for two years.
Yeah. Yeah, so we have several committees, so we have our negotiations committee, which primary responsibility there is to negotiate with our three unions. Right now we're in negotiations with all three unions, hopefully for a multi-year contract. We've had a series of one-year contracts, so that committee has actually been a pretty heavy lift and when negotiations are in full swing, it can be a fair amount of work. That said, we've got our current negotiations committee in the middle of negotiations and if this gets wrapped up, it is likely that the negotiations committee will not have anything to do hopefully for a couple of years.
And who are the three entities? How is that split up? Is it, is it teacher at all the schools and then paras or something and then custodial? I'm just wondering with the.
Right, it's teachers, it's instructional assistants have a separate unit from the teachers and then there's an AFSMI unit that covers support staff, IT and custodial employees.
Yeah, pretty much everyone but the administration.
Except that the, the people who work in the, in food service opted out of the union a couple of years ago, so they're not in any of the unions.
And we split up the negotiating work a little bit this year, except Ryan's taking it all on.
Yeah.
Well, we added, Andrew and I had been the two that have been appointed negotiations committee in the past, but since we had all three units that we were bargaining with this time, Bridget stepped up to help out with the MESSA and the AFSMI negotiations, so we threw somebody else into the mix to help out with the workload.
Yeah, and I think it would make sense given that we're in the middle to, I don't think we should, at least on the teacher side, I think we're fine.
That was my thought coming in tonight, we're in the middle, the faces are familiar, it would be a bit silly to reshuffle everything right now unless somebody had a really strong sense to.
Desire to, yeah, and it might be, it might be, it's a committee with a lot of work and it might be a committee with even more work to come in midstream and have to get up to speed. So I would entertain a motion to appoint those three members.
Oh, because we have to reappoint the committees.
Reappoint.
Yeah, all the committees have to be.
Can I do it even though one of them's me?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll move that Andrew, Bridgette and Ryan be appointed as negotiations committee.
You have a second?
I'll second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you again for doing that, I know it's a, a heavy lift and we really appreciate it, it's one of the most important things this, this board does. We also have a policy committee, the policy committee was quite active when we were changing districts because we had to reenact all our policies, we changed our structure a little. We were a policy governance board and there's a few things about policy governance which I will not go into now that didn't quite fit our board, so now we're, I think we call ourselves governance by policy, which means we're largely policy driven, but we don't, we don't do things that a true policy governance board does, like for instance, approve the budget as a consent agenda item, that's something that we're deeply involved in. So the policy committee's been very active, most of the work on the merger has been done. Now it largely kind of deals with kind of discrete policies used that, that come up, you know, for instance, you know, diversity's been kind of an evolving policy and the policy committee has, has done a lot of great work kind of figuring that out for us. The current members, the current members who are still on board are Bridgette and Ryan. I don't, that's, that's a committee that we might be able to, to reshuffle, I don't know if you guys.
I don't want to speak for Ryan. I will say that I feel like because Ryan and I got pulled both into the negotiations work, that we have been having a hard time.
Keeping up with.
Doing some of the pending policy things, me definitely, definitely me, it has been somewhat challenging to try to keep on top of.
Sure. And we do have a third person, so there should be, this should be a three-person committee, it's a standing committee, which hasn't quite been the case for a while now either, so.
The things that we kind of have on our agenda are related, that are fundraising.
The gender policy.
Gender and gender identity. There was a discussion of having a sanctuary policy.
That really didn't go anywhere for the last year, but then a religion policy did come up in the past couple of meetings.
Yep, so there was discussion of amending, possibly amending equity policy.
To include.
To include religion.
Yep.
Those are some of the things on that.
The burner right now.
Yeah.
Like I said, at this point in time, the policy manual is in a pretty good spot, but obviously it's a living document and need addressing in the future. I would be happy continuing on with the policy committee to see through some of the stuff that we have still been kind of kicking around. Be happy to renounce my seat in the finance committee to kind of lessen my committee involvement.
I would very much like to be on the policy committee.
That'd be great, I was going to say that I think you would be a.
I really, really want to do that.
Yeah, that's great.
That would get too volunteer.
I am indifferent, I can stay or go. I think if the new members have an interest, I'm happy to.
I'd love to hear what they all are and, you know, and then I might be more willing to know what to step up for.
That's a good point, sure.
That's great.
I have an idea of what some of them are.
I think he has, you have a list.
Billis, the standing committees?
Yes, let's, yeah, let's go, okay, that'd be great, let's go through and talk about that. Okay. So the next one we have is the finance committee. Is the finance committee which basically gets a deeper dive on, when we get the budget, we get, we get a fair amount of information, we get a lot more information than you do, but we really don't do line by line, we don't delve deeply into the numbers, because there's a lot of numbers and it's a lot of stuff that we just don't necessarily need to know to make informed decisions. So basically what we've established the finance committee for is just to have a discreet group that meets with Grant, our business manager, and he does that deep dive. And then if that committee feels that there are pieces from that deep dive that would be good to bring to the board and discuss, or just to have that context for general board discussions where they can, you know, interject and maybe answer questions other board members might have, that's basically the role of finance committee.
And I would say that the finance committee compared to say the negotiations committee or this Main Street Middle School Building Committee that I've been chairing, and I imagine also compared to the policy committee, is lighter in terms of overall work. There's four quarterly meetings a year and then you might have a couple of additional meetings throughout the year to address some other issues, like for example, when the audited financial statements are complete, we have an opportunity to talk with the business manager about those. If there is some, like there was a gift that was made to Roxbury School District and there wasn't much information attached to it and it's like, how do we handle this $10,000 sum of money? You know, the finance committee gets involved in those types of decisions, but it's not, it's important work, but it's not super time intensive compared to some of the other committee assignments. And then, yeah.
Yeah, and then, so, and then the other main committee that we have is the superintendent evaluation committee, which is basically what its name implies. But fortunately, thanks to Becky Bowen, she did a really good job of putting together a form that we use each year, basically, you know, kind of starting, starting around now, around the time that, you know, contract renewals happen, this, the evaluation committee will work with Libby to kind of set forth her goals for the year and then just have some, you know, general performance criteria that we expect the superintendent to do. You know, put those together and then as we get towards, you know, the end of kind of the contract cycle, the evaluation committee will put together a draft of how we feel the superintendent's doing and then bring that to the board and then we'll, we'll do a performance evaluation.
Is that annual?
It's annual.
And the contract expires in July?
Yeah, the contract expires at the end of June, so we've gone through that process and one of the things we'll, I'll bring both of you up to speed on is kind of where we are in terms of, you know, the renewal process for that, because we'll have a, we'll have a executive session soon to make that decision, but most of the work has been done, I can give you, you know, copies of the evaluation and her contract and, you know, talk to you both offline about what we've done so far.
And when, when would you say that's, that's a committee that is more seasonal in terms of work intensity, when would you say it's most demanding?
It's kind of in the spring to, you know, work with, with Libby to set her goals, although she does a lot of it herself, it's, I mean, the goal setting is more of a check, just to make sure that, that what she, she does aligns. And then, kind of right after budget season, towards the end of budget season is when the real evaluation occurs, so.
It's the kind of, I would say, it's the kind of thing that is a really heavy lift for one or two people for a concentrated period of time.
Yeah.
Like you, we really need to be able to lean on one or two people to write out, you know, write out an organization and, and.
Yeah.
We need a discussion and that takes, but it's, that part only lasts for a few weeks.
Yeah.
It is a lot then.
Like putting the evaluation together is the heavy lift and that, that requires some thoughtfulness and.
And are you currently?
I'm currently on the committee and I would like to stay on the committee and, I mean, I, you know, I meet with Libby weekly, so, but I think it's good to have obviously other members bringing other perspectives. And then we have as a, as a special committee, the MSMS Building Committee, which is a broader committee that's not just board members, but has several community members as well, as well as at least one city council member, I guess, I guess now two.
Three.
Three, oh.
Dan and Jay.
Oh, yeah.
That's so funny.
They are still, I think, partners about as parent members, but we, Tina is now no longer on there, and so we will need another school board member. I will say, I think it will be helpful to have another school board member on there.
Can we still have three city council members? Do we have, do we end up having an accidental city council meeting?
That's a good question.
As long as.
I'm an expert on that.
That's a great, that's not a quorum, is it?
Right.
Well, I don't think it's a quorum, but it could break.
They could warn it as a meeting potentially, as.
So we'll, we'll have to discuss that at the upcoming meeting.
That's very fun.
Or, yeah.
But it is a, it is a Montpelier Roxbury School District body that has community members serving, right? Like it is something that's.
That's right. And we felt that there needed to be a parent, a parent voice on the committee and it just so happened that the two parent members then were so inspired by the Main Street Middle School Building Committee's work that they decided to run for city council. Dan Richardson and Jay Richardson, yeah, so, and they've been very helpful on, on that work, I would not want to lose either of them. We are on the back end of that process, I'd say we're probably like six, I want to say after we have this meeting with the board, the next board meeting that's going to consume a bunch of time is a presentation to the board about where we are and getting some insights from you and if there are any members of the public there, getting some insights from them as well. After that, I feel like we're, it's going to be kind of downhill from there in terms of workload, but there's still important opportunities to provide insights and help with community engagement and help kind of put a bow on the whole process. Yeah, so even though you'd be coming in in the middle and I feel like a lot, some of the heavy lifting will have been done, there's still a lot of opportunity for contributions there. And we meet once a month, but sometimes people have like some committee assignments or like out of committee assignments.
Yeah, I know, so you're still interested in being chair, so.
Yeah, I feel like it makes sense, just.
And that's pretty much it.
Don't we need to replace Michelle on the language immersion committee?
Oh, yes.
Oh, that's a good one.
Yeah, yes. The language immersion committee is not a board committee, it is a, it's an administrative committee, but it's a board member. And.
Those are.
Jerry is on the principal search committee in Roxbury right now. Yeah, Steve is on the spend committee, but I talked to Libby and she said that's fundamental in the process that Steve's wanting to stay on it, that even though he's no longer technically a board member, it would probably not be as productive to, to put any words in the, in the game.
So Ryan, you just mentioned the principal search at Roxbury, is there a similar board representation for the Main Street Middle School, is that a typical process?
That's me.
Okay.
Although.
But it's ultimately the superintendent who does the hiring.
Yes, and the way that process works is the, the committees, the committee helps pick the candidates for the first round and participates in that first round of interviews and for reasons of confidentiality, that process is all quiet because, you know, we don't want to, people want to keep their searches, searches quiet until it reaches a certain point. And then, you know, the process you've seen with other principal searches, you know, the candidates that come out of that process and that's basically. the candidates that come out of that process and that's basically, you know, Libby makes the ultimate decision, but I think she's, on all those searches she's had, she's more or less deferred to the consensus of the committee. And then that process goes to, you know, the public interview process where the candidates come in for, you know, a very long day.
Yeah.
And then, you know, the community and teachers get feedback. Yeah, so, and then the, the Language Immersion Committee is a committee that's headed up by Mike Barry, who's curriculum director. That is looking at the integration we passed, not this year, but last year, funding for a study on creating a language immersion class that would be basically, it would start at kindergarten and it would be one of the, I think we have five, we do have five classes now. It would be a cohort that basically starts, that does their learning in a world language. And that cohort sticks together through, you know, would go through elementary school. And the idea being that, you know, they, it's a way to get kids who are at an age where they learn both more easily and, and with a totally different part of their brain, language to, to make them, you know, very proficient in another language. And it's, it's got some unique endpoints. It's, it's not, you know, Spanish for kindergartners, it's kindergarten in Spanish or French or whatever language. So the committee is looking at whether that's feasible and desirable and if it is, how, how it could be implemented and answering questions like, you know, what language would it be and, you know, how do we structure it and how do we make sure it's equitable? You know, all those questions. And Michelle has been on that committee and I think they're, I think they're pretty deeply into the process, but obviously we want to continue board representation on that.
So needs to be a decision to be made by a certain time or not? What's the timeline?
I would have to check the, the timeline has come and gone and I think it's, it's been a more involved process than originally anticipated. So they're still in it and I have been, I'm not sure when the anticipated date.
I asked Mike about it when he was at one of our meetings a couple of months ago and it seemed like it might be the kind of thing that would stretch through the summer and into the fall.
I kind of got, I got, got the impression that the only real hard deadline they have is they want, I don't think they want to go miss another budget cycle. I think they want to be able to, by the next budget season, which would be next fall, say whether this is something we want to do or not so we can either commit or not commit.
He also mentioned it was things like, you know, this organization that's kind of leading this effort, they don't do it in an isolated chamber. There's a committee that's formed with teachers and community members and a board member and community members can't just take five days off to, you know, iron out a, a plan and go and visit a bunch of schools around New England that are implementing these programs. So it's all about figuring out when can you get people's schedules to accord and that's also really extended the process.
Yeah, and I'm sure for whoever wants to step into that role, you know, Mike can spend some time with you, bring it up to speed. I think there's, I think there's a fair amount of literature on the program in general because it is something that other school districts have tried, including at least one and maybe a couple in Chippewa County.
Jericho, I think Richmond's starting.
Yeah, Jericho has one and I think a couple others either are considering interacting with it, into practice. And my understanding is that it's been, it's been a good program. I think that's it.
All the standing committees, a couple of special committees.
So, so we've got negotiations as the same, should we just go on committees and do you, do you both feel you have enough information to?
Sure.
Do you want to express interest now or do you want to wait until we?
Do you want to go first?
Sure. I, I don't have a super strong interest, but finance sounds good. The superintendent evaluation sounds good to me.
Yep.
And the, the building committee sounds good.
Okay.
But I don't have any strong preference for over one or the other.
I had a very similar response, actually. I, I did think I had something of value and I do, I do think I have something of value to offer to the building committee. It sounds like it's further along, but I'm thinking it might be helpful for me with my communications background, if you do think that there is sort of a public engagement piece that's coming up, that I think it might be helpful to be on that. And I'd be happy to serve on either the finance policy or the superintendent evaluation. Sounds like the policy one is a little bit more sort of ongoing and there must be some sort of a regular check in with the manual or are they reviewed on an annual basis or something like that? And then it sounds like maybe there's some ad hoc things that are assigned to that committee as well when things come up. Is that reasonable?
It's essentially when something might come to light that there is a hole or there needs to be something updated, the superintendent has a, a policy review manual that she keeps track of, her making sure that she's monitoring everything and doing her job, following all the policies and, you know, laws change. You know, the Vermont School Boards Association will make us aware that, you know, there's been legislation change at the federal level that our federal nutrition policy, which was the one that she presented tonight, they changed, the mandates changed, so we had to change our policies to make sure that we're in line with federal state guidelines. So, yes, they are all kind of living documents in that sense that, to make sure that everything is up to par.
Should we just go through? Yeah. So policy committee, Jill's expressed interest and Mara, you're interested. Are you, Mara, are you interested in any other committee?
Um, I, I, did you say that Language Immersion really doesn't need anyone at this point?
It does.
Or it does? I'm interested in Language Immersion.
Okay. Perfect. So for policy, I don't know, Bridgette, if you're, if you're done, it could be Jill, Mara and Ryan.
I am fine with that. I'm fine with that.
Five times.
No hesitation.
There was very little hesitation there.
Sorry. That's fine.
You still might get referenced.
That's great.
You're pretty solid legal reference in case you haven't noticed.
That's good, that's good.
So.
Need a motion for that appointment? I guess I'll make a motion that the policy committee consists of Mara, Jill and Ryan.
A second?
A second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
So finance, Ryan, you want to step off, correct?
I'd be happy with that.
Honestly, if I, if I'm not on there, I'll hold up board meetings, so it's, it makes sense.
Yeah, no, you need to.
Yeah.
That's why we have the Finance Committee?
Yes. I'm, I'm aware of this, that I will annoy everybody on the board with questions if I'm not.
You both expressed interest. You can both get out of the chair. I was going to fight you too hard.
I'll definitely defer to Annika. I don't want to sign up for everything and then not be able to.
We should keep in mind that Jerry will want to be on, so.
Yeah.
She's, she's here for the Superintendent Evaluation Committee.
That's right.
But why isn't, if, if Annika is on finance and I'm on finance, I almost wonder, does it make sense to have Kerry be on finance?
So that there's a Roxbury.
We've talked about this before, over including Roxbury and overstretching Roxbury reps.
Yeah.
So she would have, so Jerry would be, well, the principal search is a short time thing, so she'd be the clerk, she'd be the finance committee and where else would you call Superintendent Evaluation Committee? I don't know, I mean, the, the finance, but it's not as big of a lift in terms of the overall workload. I'm not going to speak for her, but if the rest of the board members felt like it didn't make sense to make sure that there was a Roxbury rep as part of that, to be totally informed and part of those in-depth conversations, I don't think she would mind terribly. It's not as big of a, I'm sure she's probably going to be doing more as the principal search committee right now than she would in the finance committee.
We, we could tentatively have her there and we can always adjust when we have a third person and if she's feeling really.
Overstretched.
We can have another person rather.
Okay, let's do that. So Annika, Andrew and Jerry.
So we need that motion?
Yes, we do need that motion.
So moved. Annika, Jerry and Andrew for the Finance Committee.
You have a second?
I'll second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you all for serving on the Finance Committee. Superintendent Evaluation, I would like to stay on that. I get your interest as well.
Yeah.
And I think Jerry is interested in continuing as well.
And Jill, had you said superintendent or no?
I'm, I'm fine. The one I felt like most strongly about was the building one, so.
Okay. Do you have a motion for?
Is that enough? Three's enough, right?
That's three. That's me, Annika and Jerry.
I can do it. I move that we appoint Jim, Annika and Jerry to the Superintendent Evaluation Committee.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Excellent. And then I think we just need to reappoint Andrew and appoint Jill to the Main Street Middle School Building Committee. Do you have a motion?
I move that we appoint Andrew and Jill to the Main Street Middle School Building Committee.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And then I would, well, I was just begging you to appoint Mara to the World Language Committee, but I think since it's an administrative committee, we don't necessarily need one, but as well.
Motion two. I move to appoint Mara to the Language Immersion Committee.
Second.
That's a favor.
Aye.
And do the same for Jerry in the principal search?
Well, I think since it's ongoing, I don't think you need to, to reappoint.
I, I have a question though. I just realized we should have asked this at the very beginning. Have you two been sworn in yet?
Yes.
You have.
All three of us.
Three.
Yeah, John Oden was off, so we had to do a workaround.
Somebody else who can.
Nicely done.
Yeah, you can do that. But, yeah, so it is specific of.
Perfect. That's awesome.
Yeah, so we have, yeah. But I heard John was out for a little, like, are we going to have a quorum? If Jerry can't get an order, I'd do it. But no, we're, we're all good to go. I think that's our business for the night, so.
Well, it says new board member initiation.
Yeah, I wondered about that. I was like, um, after the hazing, harassing, bullying policy, new member initiation.
Oh, you're not buying that that's our connotation, right?
Yes.
Yeah, no, I think we just, those.
The welcome.
Yeah, the welcome and.
Are you planning to meet with these two?
I am planning to meet with you guys.
Are there any questions that anyone has now?
There is, there is a training of some sort that happens, isn't there, like in the summer?
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's some VPS trainings. I would also recommend that both of you go to the VSPA website and there's kind of a packet for board members and new board members, which is kind of, it's in like a PowerPoint format. It's, just has a lot of the basics down. I would just scroll through that and spend some time. Jill, Annika, I will, you know, let's get together sometime soon and I can kind of, you know, answer any questions and just bring it up to speed on some things.
If you wouldn't mind if I joined in that, I, I'm sure that you all have questions that it will not have occurred to me to ask yet.
So other than the vacancy, is this, is this the board? I mean, Jerry's out and then we have a vacancy, but is that everybody else accounted for?
The students are sometimes here, which is a little bigger.
And the superintendent is usually here, Libby?
Yeah, and we have talked about mentors. Maybe that'd be a good idea.
Yeah, I mean, that's not something we have to vote on.
It is not something I have to vote on, but if anybody wanted.
I'm happy to be a mentor.
Mentor.
Anyone? Sign me up.
Thank you.
Andrew, you want to be one? I'm happy to be one too. So I guess you guys can.
Said it's not initiation, but we're getting bigs.
Call it that.
Yeah, so I'm happy to be anyone.
No, bigs and littles, same for sororities and fraternities. I was in a fraternity.
I think one of, one of the good things that's on the VSPA website, like either through the, the essential toolkit for school board members or their webinars, is they kind of, they kind of talk about like what school board members should get involved in and how to deflect and handle things that should be deflected to the administration and how to do that constructively and appropriately and keep them, you know, some of our policies cover that. I mean, we used to give people the policies in paper when they existed, only in paper, but now that they're electronic, I think we just tell folks that they're on the website. But there are, there's a couple of policies that talk about the relationship between the school board members and the, and the administration and the superintendent and kind of the division of authority and handling communications with the administration and seeking information, that kind of stuff.
When Jerry started, we had said, obviously, ideally, we all read the policy manual, we all know all the policies, but here are the really important ones that, for you, how you act as a board member and how we interact with the administration and the superintendent, like these are kind of the big ones that put on the top of the list to read.
Yeah, no, exactly. Some of it's intuitive and some of it's not intuitive, but.
Good to know.
Good to know, yeah.
So, do you already have a mentor, Mara?
I don't think we give Mara a mentor, so.
Okay. So I think we should just pick him now, right?
Yeah.
I'm sitting by you. One of your mentors.
Yes, there we go. We just needed to.
Jill and I are serving on the Main Street Middle School Building Committee together, so which are the easiest.
And y'all are on to board.
Yeah, great.
Woo! I was so.
Plus we work across the street.
Yes, we do.
From Carpool to Roxbury.
I'm like, oh, that's funny. More people can join the Carpool.
Yes, the Carpool!
Yeah, the Carpool.
I love this.
It's all over the Carpool.
Typically it's a like me in the high school parking lot at six. One or two cars go to Roxbury.
That would keep me from going to the yummy ice cream place every time, which is something that I need.
Basically excited with this Carpool, it sounds like we have more meetings in Roxbury.
I'm sure.
So I did just want to take a moment. I, I had every intention of writing each of you individually and explaining my interest on being on the board and, and sort of introduce myself a little bit better, but everyone's been really gracious in reaching out and I've learned a lot about you already and I really look forward to working with you. And just really quickly, my background is for many years, the majority of my career, I worked at the Agency of Education as their policy and legislative affairs person. So I did communication with media and with the public, so I worked closely with the School Boards Association and Principal's Association and I worked for the State Board of Ed, which is why I do sort of have some Robert's Rules knowledge, but for the last four years, I've been the Director of Property Tax at the Tax Department. So that part is a little rusty and meanwhile I have a pretty good handle on how, you know, the numbers go from when you pass your school budget to when you get your property tax bill. I kind of understand that sausage factory.
Yes.
I do have a daughter at the middle school and I, I've been trying to be really clear that I wanted to be on the board despite that, not because of it. I don't come here with any sort of set agenda or axe to grind, quite the opposite. But I do have that perspective that I think would be helpful and as someone who's grown up in Vermont and seen, you know, grew up in the Northeast Kingdom and now I'm here in the great big city of Montpelier, I, I just, I think, I'd like to think that I have something to offer, but I definitely will have a lot of questions and like I said, a lot of these pieces are things that I saw from the other, from the other side, from the state side, and so I will be asking what probably seem like odd questions and I just appreciate everyone's being so open and forgiving as we ask those questions. So thank you.
No, thank you for serving. No, we're really excited to have you on the board and Annika as well. I don't know if you want to introduce yourself to the public, no need.
I wasn't planning on doing, but I can. But, yeah, I met with.
But, yeah, I've met with Bridget and you, so just to give a little bit of background, this is completely different from where Jill's coming from, I've never been in any of these situations before. I own a small IT company, so I come from business background, and I've done civil engineering as my bachelor's and master's, so a little bit of different background, but I'm excited to be on this side of the table and learn as much as I can and offer whatever I can, my services. So what, you know, a few things that interest me were, as we went through the committee, some of the finance and then the evaluation committee, and something that I've done in the business background where, you know, even though you don't know things, it's a different skill to be able to evaluate and whatnot, so that kind of interests me. Coming from the civil engineering background, that's where the building committee kind of poked my interest, but again, as I said, there's no specific preference towards one or the other. But, you know, I just want to take this opportunity to thank you guys to, you know, accepting us and welcoming us into this. Excited, and as Jill mentioned, I'll have a whole bunch of questions, which most likely will be some very stupid, but I'll ask them next.
Yeah, no, and it's kind of a good time to come on board, because, you know, we, the, yeah, kind of our two main things are superintendent oversight and the budget, so, you know, those kind of heat up, heat up in the fall, although, you know, we do, we do things about, you know, kind of year-round, and obviously, we do other things like the policy, et cetera. But it's a several time before you get into budget swing and learn a little more about the schools, the administration, and how it works.
Can I ask a, like, protocol question? So we got email addresses set up today, the official MPSVT. So is it safe to say that that is our email address that we can use and give out for board work?
Yes.
And I was, and it's all subject to public information, so I don't want to start having other side conversations or texts and things like that? I can use that email if people...
Yeah, use that, use that email for board work. You know, if people contribute you on personal email, try to direct it to board work, because people will, you know, you're in the community, they've got your email addresses, it's probably not, so they'll use the email address they have. So you try to direct people to your board email, and certainly initiate any board business from your board email. Yeah, and then obviously, you know, you're still a parent, so, you know, advocate for your kids on a personal email and, you know, advocate as a parent, so keep that separate, too, but I think that's the biggest thing. And actually, until, really, like, two or three years ago, we didn't have separate.
We didn't have separate accounts, but it is, there were some public records requests, both to us and to U32, and it was just very clear that it would be much better if we just used a public account for that purpose. I will say, as a parent, just a slight warning, which is that because you're now in the MPSVT email system, you might, your email will autofill, like, for a teacher, so.
Yeah.
You really have to do, you have to make that effort to place your kid-related stuff on the other email.
Yeah. Yeah, and then be aware of open meeting laws, of, anytime you have three board members on a communication, you are in potential violation of open meeting law. So the only information that can be shared in that type of setting, and that includes, like, having drinks with three needs, if you're, you know, if three of us coalesce at three needs, we should not be talking about board business. The information that you can convey is a kind of purely administrative stuff, like, you know, the meeting will be at seven, or do you want a carpool?
Do you want to put things on the agenda, you can set an agenda over email.
Yeah, yeah, and you can send agenda items to me to request, and have them put on the agenda. Ninety-nine percent of the time, they end up there, I might want to discuss with you or have questions, or, you know, we might want to park it maybe a little in a different spot in terms of just, you know, laying out the agenda, you know, weeks in advance.
What if, what if there's something, I know I've come before the board about a particular piece, if somebody wants the board to address something or has a question of the board or has a statement they want to make to the board about some particular pressing topic, I assume in a lot of cases, people probably blast it to the board, but is the protocol that we send things to you, are you the channel through which, or, because if I then forward it to the rest of the board, have I now just created a meeting? I'm just, I can imagine people sending...
I would, I would send stuff to me, at least, yeah. And I think we try to filter most board requests through me, just to make sure that we're, we're not, we're not doing that.
And if someone emails, and this happened, I mean, I think we got one today before the meeting, so if someone emails the whole board, you can respond to them, and you might want to respond to them, but you shouldn't respond to everyone.
Yeah.
You can respond directly.
Okay.
And it's also important, when you're talking to members of the public or potentially even the press, that people understand that you, as an individual board member, you might be expressing your opinions, which sometimes might differ from the majority vote of the board on an issue, and that's fine. You know, First Amendment rights, it's great, but it's important to distinguish that for people, that you're speaking as one board member, you're not speaking as the entire board, because the board itself does have authority. That one board member on his or her own does not, so.
Yeah, and there is, you know, some differing protocol there. I think the VSBA guidance kind of says, once the board speaks, the board has spoken.
Yeah, I think that's right, I think, I think the VSBA sort of, and that's not a law or a requirement, but the protocol, it suggests as a protocol for board members to, to at least think twice or avoid criticizing the board's action after it's happened.
Yeah.
But as Andrew said, you have, I mean, you're a political...
You're an official, you explain things.
Yeah.
But it's important to say, you know, this is my perspective, so say, for example, you did, you were in a minority vote on an issue, and you were talking to a member of the public or a member of the press about it, you, you are, you can certainly express, no, but there is nothing here that would limit your First Amendment rights to say, you know, this is, this is how I feel about this issue, but general protocol, like Bridget's talking about this, to say, but, you know, we are a board, we, we act, you know, as, as a single unit, and just because I didn't agree with this, the board has spoken, this is the decision of the board, and, you know, the VSBA protocol is generally to support the board at large, even if you disagree on a matter after a decision's been made.
But, but it's not a statute-wide requirement, so.
And it sounds like logistically, items come from you, Anna, at the board meeting, okay.
I'm sure we're missing a bunch of little stuff, but...
And are your mailing addresses and phone numbers public information and available to people to write and call? Okay.
I think we actually, I think we took them off the website.
Did we?
I don't think so.
I used it to text Jim.
Yeah, I was going to say, I think they are.
I thought we took the physical address off the website. I thought they were...
They're in your boxes, things like that.
We definitely took them off at one point.
But do you get calls? Phone number, phone numbers, or do you, do you get, do people get calls?
Occasionally, I have.
I, I have, I'd say, the vast majority comes via email. Email, I mean, and the second thing is people just catching you somewhere.
Sporting events.
Sporting events, co-op, cattle grounds.
There's, it's in our, it's in one of our policies, I think it's our superintendent board policy, which is if you're communicating with the superintendent or have a request of the superintendent to copy Jim.
And, yeah, and, and also do not go to administrators directly.
Right.
Like, the superintendent, like, kind of the pathway to administrators is through Libby and you. Yeah, like, don't contact Ryan and say, blah, 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 you need to fix this. That puts everyone in a very awkward place.
I will say, in practice, though, with the superintendent, I feel like there are some, there are some in practice, like, exceptions that roll, like, if we're working on a negotiations issue we'll work through, and then I generally like to share things with Jim, so he's in the know, but, or like, if we're putting together a Main Street Middle School Building Committee agenda thing, I don't want to fill up your inbox too much.
Yeah, no, I kind of think of it as a doorway thing, I mean, if there's like a new matter, a new initiative that you're going to bring up with Libby, you know, kind of involve me at the onset, but then if it's just logical, like, okay, like, that's great, you know, Jill, let me go work on this, and that might involve, you know, a series of communications over a series of months, like, once, once it doesn't make sense for me to be involved, it's totally fine to, you know, have an open flow with her on that matter, but if there's something like completely new and, you know, raises a new set of issues, then I kind of go back through the doorway.
How are the students appointed? Does the school appoint them for student leadership or something? Okay, so they're not on this March cycle like we just did yesterday?
Yeah. So we had a meeting tonight with no public involved, but, you know, we somewhat frequently get public coming and sharing comments, concerns, praises, whatever. It's tough sitting here and having somebody tell us, please do this or do that, but our role during a meeting with the public comment period isn't a chance to interact with the public in the setting, it's really, it's a chance for us to listen and kind of absorb those and maybe use them to make decisions later on in the meeting, but during the public comment periods of our meetings, even if we have 100 people here going through the microphone, we don't typically respond to every single comment, every question, every direction that the public would like to see.
And that's not the case, if we have, you know, say, a principal or grant or someone else coming up, you know, making a presentation on a program or the budget, then obviously, you know, we can all ask questions during that presentation. Or if it's a member of the public who's giving an actual formal presentation on an issue, you know, interaction with that, but for like the public, for the set of set public comment period, you know, it's, we're in this in mode, which, which can be, depending on the topic, can be hard to sit here and not react, or give, you know, give the type of pusher answer response that...
And is it safe to say that you are also the spokesperson for the board on things like social media and, like, this search for another board member, it seems like that's, are we supposed to help get that word out? Is there a method?
Yes, I think you can definitely help get that word out. Social media is tricky. Yeah, we're, I think many of us here are on social media, some of us are on various groups. You know, I will share from time to time, and Michelle was really good at this, and, you know, Steve did a good job, too, and, you know, Bridgette shared as well, you know, just kind of general information, especially when a topic comes up. I found that helpful. I think there has been some advisement that you just don't want to do that at all, especially, and also, even if it's just on a information level, if board members start coming in, if three or four of us start talking, you know, and kind of getting one of those chains on phones, are we in violation of open meeting laws? So, it's tricky, I, I try to be pretty selective, but there are times when it's, it's useful to engage, and sometimes, especially if it's, you know, if it's a matter that's controversial and it's blowing up, and maybe blowing up in not a helpful way, you know, to maybe contact me and, and see, but if, if, you know, it's something like, well, then, you know, say there's a, people are asking some questions, I think a post-it solely safe is, you know, we're talking about it this next meeting, you know, if you want more information, there's a tab. You know, just, you know, getting information out there, I think, can be helpful. If it's, again, if it starts to blow up, or you start to feel like you're opining or getting into a real dialogue, especially if others come in. Either I can... Anything else, and again, you know, I don't know, we don't really have a system for mentors, I would just say, let's try to just have a few, you know, coffees over the next few months, just to make sure that we're checking in with the questions. And I certainly want to be, both of you just can go to speed on a couple of things, because you have, you know, a couple of decisions to make, and I think that's, that's what I'll say.
One thing for Jill, we have the Main Street Middle School Building Committee next Monday. It's the second Monday of every month, it's one that I'm currently scheduled for.
Are those here?
They're also, yeah, right down the street.
And how do you generally find out when committee meetings are happening? Like, I assume once you're in them, you maybe decide when you're meeting next, but...
They're all announced, they have to be publicly warned, so Anna would send out to the entire board whenever there's any committee meeting happening.
Awesome.
Yeah, the committees should appoint a chair. I think we do that on my next meeting. Yeah, but the committees are also subject to meeting laws, so that could be, be warranted, and that's, that's true, because sometimes, a couple of times, that's been forgotten, and you're about to meet, and if I didn't warrant it, like, settle, set aside a lunch for a meeting, and you can't do it, so. That's how we want it.
But then conversely, if it is worn, like, Anika could come to the building committee meeting.
Exactly, yeah.
Anybody can come to the building committee meetings. We encourage...
Encourage one attempt.
Yeah, which we have not gotten, but it's okay. We'll do better, better engagement.
Okay, well, we really get out here before eight, but I think you can pull that, that will be up.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
So this, thanks all.